Now.
Thanks Scott.
All right. Everything's live Scott?
Yes, sir. We're good to go.
Very good. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is the day before St. Patrick's Day or Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. We'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting, which is again being held via the Zoom platform due to the continuing coronavirus platform. It's also being continuing coronavirus pandemic. It is also being livestreamed on YouTube and this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments and to address council at the appropriate time, we have a number of public comment periods this evening. Please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. And if you're having any technical difficulties at any point in the meeting or during those public comment periods, you can contact our public information specialist, John Vernon at three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. And I'll repeat that number throughout the meeting if anyone is having technical challenges. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant city manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Community Engagement Manager Morgan Lassiter.
Here.
Public Information Specialist John Vernon.
Here.
Animal Services Director Jessica Arias.
Here.
Animal Service Program Coordinator Laura Mitchell Michael, sorry.
Here.
And Police Chief Jess Smite. Very good. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we turn for our invocation to Councilmember Bob Ward.
Let us pray. We are grateful for the hope we are now beginning to experience as we start to emerge from this year of separation, sickness and stress. Among our many blessings for which we are grateful for are the dedication and sacrifices of all of our healthcare and frontline workers. For the many volunteers who feed the hunger and care for those in need, the conscientious efforts of the Health Department staff and others in giving us our vaccines, the efforts of city staff in providing logistical support in the administration of the vaccination program, and all those many other people who work daily to provide us life sustaining goods and services during this pandemic. As we continue to struggle with this pandemic, we pray that you bring healing to those who are ill, protect those who are at risk, and give comfort to those who have loved, who have lost loved ones. We pray for your presence as we meet tonight to fulfill our responsibilities to our community. We ask that our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and fairly in all actions we take tonight. We pray for these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. We have a special recognition this evening. I'd like to recognize Animal Services Program Coordinator Laura Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. We're here tonight to recognize Patty Reagan. She is the 2020 Outstanding Volunteer of the Year through the United Way of Alamance County. And we are thrilled with this and so happy to be here tonight to recognize her. Burlington Animal Services is really very fortunate to have many wonderful volunteers who serve us in so many different capacities. But Patty really is exceptional. She embodies the true spirit of volunteerism really more than most. She gives abundantly of her time, service and support of our organization. And she's been a dedicated animal services volunteer for 10 years now. She is a self-proclaimed major cat lover. And most Saturdays and even some holidays, you will find her working alongside our staff, assisting our visitors, tending to the cats and so much more. She's generous with not only her time, but her many thoughtful contributions that enhance our operations and provide important enrichment for our pets. Really, when she sees a need, she simply takes care of it. She, of course, will be the first to very humbly tell you that she just does it simply because it makes her happy. But she always goes above and beyond. And, excuse me, does everything with such a cheerful attitude. And she never takes herself too seriously. She has a really great sense of humor, keeps all of us laughing. So we are thrilled that the United Way of Alamance County named Patty as one of their 2020 Outstanding Volunteers of the Year. And we hope that this recognition expresses how much we appreciate her countless hours of volunteer service, dedication and support of our organization. And to thank her for just being so good to us and to our animals. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations Patty.
Thank you. I would just say I'm so honored to be part of this community and especially to have the opportunity to work with the amazing people at Burlington Animal Services. I'm just very grateful.
Well, thank you.
The previous picture, where did the big cat come from?
So the big cat was over at a hardware store slash landscape over in Greensboro. And then the wonderful artist from Laura, you'll have to remind me of the organization, painted it. So it looks beautiful.
It's pretty cool.
It is. I'm sorry, I don't know the artist, but I think Jess might know that one.
Yes, there were two artists from the Alamance Art Council. So we worked with them to create the beautiful, you know, design on the cat. So we were really happy with that. It really added a lot of brightness to the facility.
So you just found that Patty just traveling along the road one day?
Well, as that self-proclaimed cat lover, I had seen one over the large cat unpainted at a veterinary practice. And I just kept looking for it and I saw it one day. So we called Jess where she was on vacation out of the state and just asked her, can we bring the cat in? And she said, yes. So it magically appeared the next week.
Well, it does look like you have fun doing it.
I do.
Very good. Well, thank you again Patty. We appreciate your efforts and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we recognize our interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No.
None.
None.
All right. Before council, we have minutes from our February 1st, 2021 work session, our February 2nd, 2021 city council meeting and our February 16th, 2021 city council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those foregoing minutes?
To move.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make motion. We adopt the agendas presented. Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to adopt the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A, to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Burlington and New Leaf Society outlining partnership intent regarding the Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park. Item B, to adopt a resolution to establish a Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park Technical Advisory Board. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Next is the first of our public hearings for the evening. Item one, a public hearing has been continued to consider an application to rezone from MBR Medium Density Residential District to CI Conditional Industrial District for the use of a cemetery. This public hearing was initially scheduled for the February 16th, 2021 meeting, but was continued by the city council to this evening. The property is located at the north side of Hanford Road and north of Old Coach Road and being a portion of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 131303. To begin this public hearing, I'd like to recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
I think Mr. Huffman has information to share on this case.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I indicated to you earlier this week, I have received notification from the attorney Lawson Brown for the petitioner in this instance. And he has requested that this matter be continued over from this city council meeting until the second meeting in April. I think that it was April the 20th, 2021. Council for the two neighboring property owners was contacted by Mr. Brown and he has consented to such a continuance also.
Very good.
Mayor, since there's no objection to this, apparently I'd move that we continue this until the April 20th meeting.
I second that.
Motion to continue made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to continue to the April 20th city council meeting? All right. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. And this time we'll move to our public hearing number two. Public hearing has been continued to consider an application to amend a conditional rezoning that was approved by the Burlington City Council on September 18th, 2018. This public hearing was initially scheduled for the February 16th, 2021 meeting, but was continued by the Burlington City Council to this evening. The request is to increase the number of single-family lots from 219 to 241. The property is located at 1722 Shamrock Drive, formerly known as Shamrock Golf Course, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 130754. This is on appeal. And to begin the public hearing, I'd like to recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Is my screen displaying the map?
Yes.
Yes, there we go. We will begin. This is a request to amend the existing conditional zoning approved by city council on September 18th, 2018. You can see the property in question and it's hatched. The property is located at 1722 Shamrock Drive, which is forming the Shamrock Golf Course and was rezoned to a conditional residential district. The property was also annexed into the city limits in December of 2018. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the original conditional use zoning district to allow the following. Number one, an increase of 22 single-family lots from 219 lots to 241 lots. This increased density will be allowed by adjusting lot widths. Number two, replace the previous condition to install a six-foot fence along the inside of the southernmost property line and butting the existing lots on Monroe Holt Road with a four-foot tall landscape berm and buffer, which is opaque with evergreens. The berm and landscaping also applies to the majority of the balance of the perimeter of the development. Number three, eliminate the previous condition that specified the location of a cluster box mailbox kiosk location. The other conditions, just so you recall, remain in place from September. Minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 60 feet. They also have setback standards of 25 foot in the front, 10 foot side, 25 foot rear. The homes constructed on the perimeter lots facing Shamrock Drive will have a minimum of 1,900 square feet of living area. All impervious surfaces will meet Phase Two Stormwater Standards. No obstruction to the private roads over the dam. This will allow and ensure emergency access. The signage at the entrance of the development will be repaired. That's the existing Shamrock sign. And going forward, Shamrock shall not be used in name of the proposed future development. The adopted comprehensive land use plan calls for rural residential agricultural in this area. Put that up real quick. This site was previously zoned R15 and is adjacent to existing residential and bankhead land that is zone medium density residential under the UDO. While this request allows a higher density than the rural residential area, it is inconsistent in the land use plan. Staff does support the requested amendment due to previous rezoning as well as the many compatible adjacent uses in the area. The request was considered at the January 25th Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. The request proceeded a vote of four to two on a motion to deny the request. Due to this vote, the Plan and Zoning Commission does not recommend approval of amendment to the conditional zoning district. As you heard earlier, the applicant has requested this on appeal. I can answer any other questions and I believe Mr. Ryan Moffett or Mr. Lawson Brown is here to present the application.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Mr. Moffett or Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Baltudis. Thank you, Mr. Nun. Mayor, members of council. Very much appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening on this request. On behalf of Henson Realty, I am Ryan Moffett. I'm a lawyer at the Vernon Law Firm. We're located at 522 South Lexington Avenue, Burlington. We do, our firm represents the applicant, Henson Realty. We've represented Henson Realty since late 2017 as it relates to this property. We've worked with Lee Bryant at Evans Engineering, who has masterfully done the... Yes, Lee is, Lee is on the call as well, who has masterfully handled the design and engineering work for this project over the last almost three years, almost four years. You all are probably very familiar with the history of this project. The applicant, Henson Realty purchased the property in June of 2018 from the Walker family, who owned the property dating back to the late night, mid, late 1950s. It was the former Shamrock Golf Course, which Calvin Walker and later his son Steve Walker owned and operated for many, many years before it fell on hard times and the Walker family put it on the market and Henson Realty purchased it. We took the property through the TRC process beginning in the fall of 2017, started the conditional zoning process. It was thoroughly vetted. Traffic impact analysis was conducted. All the TRC participants approved of the plan. Client engaged surrounding property owners as the zoning, the rezoning process started, engaged in months-long negotiations with those neighbors through local attorney Frank Longest and eventually presented a substantially revised plan from what had initially been submitted for approval, which among the conditions that Mr. Nun listed off included a reduction in the lot count of the initial proposal of 241 to 219. And based on those efforts, council approved the conditional zoning based on the reduced lot plan and the accompanying conditions. That was on September 18th, 2018. Two and a half years later, we are back before you. And as you probably know, not much has happened on the property since then. And today we're requesting an amendment to the current conditional zoning to recapture 22 of the lots to restore the plan to the original 241 lot plan to modify a buffer condition to replace the fence with the buffer consistent with the buffering berm and landscaping around the rest of the property. And then to locate a, a cluster box unit kiosk or to remove a condition identifying a location so that when time comes for a final plan, staff and the applicant have flexibility to locate that CBU kiosk in an appropriate place agreeable to the applicant and staff. So why are we here before you with this plan again? What's changed in the two and a half years since the initial conditional zoning approval? Well, quite a bit actually. From a market standpoint, there's been a lot of changes. As we all have, I think, been fortunate to witness in Burlington, demand has, has exploded and supply has not necessarily followed that. I'm sure you all saw the, the story that ran in the Times News a couple of weeks ago that the City of Burlington is the number two hottest buyer's market in the nation based on Realtor.com data. That says all I need to say about the demand for single-family, the man for housing in the City of Burlington. Development costs have gone up. Materials prices have ballooned. The price of lumber has increased 250% since this conditional zoning was initially approved. Demand for outdoor recreational opportunities has grown with the dawn of COVID-19 and, and those are expected to remain as, as COVID dies away and people continue to embrace a new, more active way of life. But probably most importantly, as the city itself is concerned, was the adoption of its unified development ordinance in November of 2019. In terms of residential land use and development planning, this adoption of a new development ordinance marked a shift from the old rigid lot size-based residential zoning districts that we were used to in the form of your R12s, your R15s, your R20s, et cetera, which were largely driven by lot dimensions to a more flexible and density-based residential zoning regime. Under the current development ordinance that was adopted in 2019, residential developments become aimed towards flexible lot dimensions that sometimes allow for smaller lots but require more shared open space. It also allows for higher lot or unit count so long as there are allowances made for active open space or other recreational opportunities for residents of, of these newly proposed communities. And these changes are driven by policy considerations informed by a number of factors. Municipalities, as we've seen, have taken an active interest in promoting active living. Obviously, the market demand for active living communities, the market demand for less maintenance intensive, smaller lots, more larger shared open space and recreational amenities. And of course, municipalities always have an interest in increased tax base. There's maintenance costs. But they're also, that also means more resources to provide for a better quality of life and other positive programs. So where are we today? Well, back in 2018, what were policies that were just starting to inform the city's drafting process for what is now our set of ordinances? And what were policies that were just beginning to take hold as a product offering during the time that this proposal was starting to go through the first time around? Those are now unequivocally defining the housing market in Alamance County. Everywhere we look, it's, we can see it. Look at McIntosh, look at Huffman Point off of Grand Oaks, the Springwood Park area, Cambridge Park in Meban, the Corey Hills Golf Course redevelopment. That is what today's market and today's communities are commanding. So the City of Burlington and every municipality have the building permits to prove it. So when Henson Realty back in 2018 offered the list of concessions and conditions that it did to achieve approval of the initial conditional zoning request, obviously offering that on the assumption that the neighbors' opposition efforts would cease, the city would approve the plan and Henson Realty would be able to move forward with its project. What Henson Realty ended up with was a plan that essentially had one foot in the future, one foot in the past and was really an absolute minimum that it could settle on to get by at the time. Of course, we were appreciative of the city's approval, the city's patience with the negotiation process and, and its acceptance of what we put forth at the end of that process. And we were ready to move forward with the development. But again, it was a bare minimum that Henson Realty could get by with at the time. So the plan with all of its accumulated conditions and concessions was a plan that was really closely assessed and was determined to be a product that would work if it could be brought to market in 2019 or 2020, if all went well. Well, we're two and a half years later and we have market forces that are calling for what this property has to offer. And we have policies that form the basis of the planning practices that this plan is rooted in. But we have 219 lots is all we are permitted on this property. And based on today's conditions, it is an inefficient plan. It under utilizes this property. This is a gem of a development opportunity for the City of Burlington. And it is not being taken full advantage of under the circumstances, the market circumstances and planning circumstances that we're in. The development's been planned carefully to offer the best of everything. Low density, extensive recreational amenities, 40% open space. It's an unheard of mix of offerings. But all of these features are costly to maintain. There has to be enough housing units to make these desirable amenities available on an ongoing basis. For the city's part, there's going to be miles of new infrastructure that the city will have to be responsible for the maintenance of ultimately. Over 14,000 linear feet of water lines, almost 14,000 linear feet of new sewer lines, 8,500 linear feet of public city streets. And of course, that all has to be paid for and maintained as well, the same way that amenities do. Simply put, the numbers have to make sense. And there has to be a sufficient number of dwelling units to be able to maintain all of these desirable offerings at a reasonable cost. So with all that said, the kicker still remains that the 241 lot plan, even by the flexible standards of the current development ordinance, is still extremely measured. When you look at what the development ordinance would otherwise permit in suburban residential areas zoned for medium density residential. And I say that because before we went through the initial process of zoning this property to conditional residential, it was R15. Had we abandoned that process as we were encouraged to do by so many and left the property to be R15, upon adoption of the UDO, it would have converted to what is now medium density residential. Under medium density residential zoning in the current development ordinance, that district permits townhome development by right at a density of 4.85 units per acre. On 100-acre properties such as this, even accounting for 25, for a 25% open space requirement, that amounts to more than 350 townhome units allowed by right without the that amounts to more than 350 townhome units allowed by right without the necessity of a new zoning approval. That's what this property could have been used for had we never gone to the trouble of zoning this conditionally, negotiating conditions, and conceding lots for what was already a low-density development. And just to be clear, 350-plus townhome units, those are the sort of numbers that are the product of sound planning policy in this day and age under the current development ordinance. Those are the kind of numbers that communities in Alamance County are seeing in order to justify the cost of a higher standard of living. It's how open space and amenities are able to be offered and maintained throughout our community. This kind of development's also how municipalities leverage their tax base to promote healthy community programs and smart growth. 350 townhomes is not a bad thing if it's done the right way. And I just say that to make the comparison that we're asking to restore this property to 241 units, which is still a low-density development. And I should also add that of the 22 units or the 22 lots that we are requesting to restore to this plan, five of those lots are pre-existing. If you look on the outskirts of what was the former golf course property, those lots already exist. So in reality, we're asking to recoup 17 new lots. It's really not a lot, and under the current planning climate and the current ordinance, it's well within reason. So staff has supported this request back in 2017. In 2018, when it was amended, staff continues to support this request. At this point, it should be obvious why it's a reasonable request and merits approval. The amendment is clearly consistent with the comprehensive land use plan for suburban residential use. I think, and I don't, I don't think this makes a difference one way or another, but I'm pretty sure that when it was zoned conditional residential back in 2018, the comp plan was amended to bring this property within, to bring this property, make this property or this use consistent with the comp plan. But in any event, it's consistent with the city's planning policies. It's reasonable for several reasons. From a size and physical condition standpoint, the conditions of the property and the plan allow Henson Realty to offer amenities that are typically reserved for high-density communities in a low-density setting. The benefits to landowners, neighbors, and the surrounding community, just starting with the water and sewer infrastructure, that's going to be a massive investment by the developer. Towards of $300,000, $400,000 if I would venture to guess, maybe more, given the cost increase of materials and just general increases in development costs. And on the flip side, that equates to a massive value add for surrounding property owners. I know not a lot of credit is given for that, or hasn't been historically from surrounding property owners, but it really does, it really does add to the value of their property, not to mention the value add that will come when this property is built out. And then in relation to the existing current development, it's obviously consistent with the permissible development under conditional zoning. And compared to permissible development in surrounding areas, meaning permissible development in the surrounding areas zoned MDR, which that is what the surrounds are zoned, this project is conservative. There's really no debating that. Compared to what's permitted to be done in other districts in the immediate surrounds, this is a conservative proposal. It's also in the public interest. It's consistent with the city's stated land use policies. It represents measured, thoughtful, and valuable growth towards the southern boundaries of the city limits. We've also experienced changes that warrant this amendment. Rapid growth can't be denied. The policy shift for this kind of planning, sufficient numbers, additional, just a few additional numbers will go a long way to be able to offer this product. You know, the reasons are endless. I think we've been through this quite a bit. You all have been very patient with the time spent before you with this, but this is an important project for the city. We're doing everything we can to get it right and do right by the property, do right by the city, and really do right by the surrounding area. I know it's a special property. I've seen it. I've grown up here, and I think all of the approach that Henson Realty has taken to doing this right can't be overstated, and I don't know that anyone could do it better. With all that said, we obviously appreciate your continued consideration, your favorable consideration. If there are any comments that might object, I'd ask for the opportunity to address those in a follow-up manner. Otherwise, thanks for your time and consideration. Happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm going to take just a moment. I know there's some chat going on in the chat box. I'd like to remind everyone attending that public comments need to be submitted in the correct manner, which will be once the public hearing begins, and that will be using the raise hand feature or star nine on your phone. It's not the right thing to be putting those in the chat box as interrupting our meeting flow, and I ask that you please respect the meeting flow. So at this time, Ryan, any additions that you wanted to include? Otherwise, I'll open the floor to Lee Bryant, or I believe Paul Mylum is with us as well for any other comments before we begin the public hearing.
This is Lee Bryant with Evans Engineering at 4609 Dunn's Drive. I'm here to answer any questions, any technical questions. I think Ryan's done a wonderful job of bringing it from where we started to where we are now, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Paul, are you with us? Anything you wanted to add?
No, sir, I'm fine. I think they did a fine job on our behalf. Thank you.
Very good. Council members, any questions before we begin public hearing? Go ahead, Kathy.
I'm wondering if you have the map that shows the actual design, the layout? Yes, thank you. Is there, is there access from the streets surrounding the project so that the neighbors that are there now could access the amenities, or not the amenities, but the green and open space?
Yes, ma'am. From what they've presented on these plans, you have actual streets, which also include sidewalks. So you have these, these streets coming into the development from the end all the way to the, around to the main entrance here. The backside, you'd have an entrance here. But you have, this looks like they propose two, three, four on this side. And the pedestrian plan that they submitted with this runs throughout the community, which was required. So you've got sidewalks connecting to those internal, that are only internal of the site. And it's all through public streets and public sidewalk. Mr. Moffett may have more response.
Ms. Hikes, all of the, all of the conditions that we negotiated are staying in place except for the three we noted. As far as the amenities go, the same position stands, sidewalks along the public streaks or public sidewalks. There will be walking areas throughout what used to be the old golf course and what's now the, what will be, what's being proposed is the open space. I think old cart paths will be made use of for those purposes. That will be HOA property, so I can't speak to, from a legal standpoint, the public availability of that, but to my knowledge, there won't be fences or locks or anything of that nature. So.
Thank you.
Any additional council member questions?
Mike, I've got a couple of questions. So in the, just so I'm clear, and I think I am, but I just want to be sure. In fall of 2017, when this went to the TRC, did the TRC approve this in its original capacity of the 241 lots?
That's correct. It actually came to council. It was at the 241 lots.
And so the other comment, and I want to be sure I'm clear on this, you, when you were making your opening comments, you said that it's not consistent with the land use plan but is consistent with adjacent uses. Can you elaborate on where the inconsistency and consistency is?
If I can stand the correct, that comment, because that is correct. It has been rezoned as your, your original action was done. That is a correct statement Mr. Moffett made. That was incorrect, but it, so it would currently be as approved, consistent.
And you know, this, the UDO concept of what we were working on, and I think Mr. Moffett made a good analogy, it's sort of one foot in the past and one foot in the future, because we were kind of working on this during that same period of time. But the R15, as we used to know it, would have required conditional use, conditional rezoning. But the UDO, under its current standards, this would be under medium-duty or medium-density? Is that right?
That's correct.
But would this be considered a low-density project under, under the proposed layout that they have versus what we call MDR?
It would obviously depend on the final density. I think they're at 2.8 currently on this layout. It could be low-density. It's been, it was reviewed for the stormwater regs under low-density. So it would be zoned in as a medium-density area, but it could be termed as low-density based on the units per acre they've proposed.
Gotcha. I, I thought that was right. I mean, I'm just trying to think in two phases, one being the old R15 and the conditional use mentality, and the other being the UDO that we allow now by developer right and its listed purposes. I mean, we studied this and, for many, 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 many years, density and how the future land use planning was going to progress. So I just wanted to be sure I made the correlation, so thanks.
Yes, sir.
Council member Owen, did you have a question?
Mike, just a hypothetical situation. If this plan, well, as, as being requested to change was actually the first plan that came forward back in 18, and that met specifications then, did it not?
It did.
And.
Technical review committee.
Technical review committee. And did the P and Z recommendation, what was their recommendation on the plan then?
Don't want to misspeak. I don't have that with me, but I believe it was the same as, I don't know if it was four to two to deny, but it was a recommendation of denial.
Any other council questions before we begin the public hearing?
Mr. Owen, were you asking about the TRC or the planning commission recommendation?
TRC evidently approved it, planning commission did not. Is that correct?
That's what I have. I don't know the vote.
Because it was conditional at the time. Under R15.
Under the, under the former ordinance.
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah. But given its current state under the UDO, it would have been really not a council item.
Correct. It would be by right.
Yeah, by right.
Correct.
So technically, what you're saying then, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, if this proposal would be forthcoming for the first time as we speak, it would be actually by right in terms of what's been, it's been requested, is that correct?
Correct. Medium-density residential, it would be by right, and we'll just go through the TRC process.
Would staff have required some of the conditions that's set in place, just as a routine conversation point through TRC process?
Yeah, I think the, almost all the conditions are now reflected in some fashion in our UDO as far as enhanced landscaping, pedestrian networks, buffering, streets, connections, and things of that nature. I think, you know, that was an improvement with our UDO. We didn't have to go conditions. We put those into our development standards now. So I think it would be very, very similar.
So the development standards now are a little higher than they were then, so we didn't have to conditionally work it out?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Very good. Any, any further council questions? And just to remind the team, to Ryan, Lee, and Paul, you'll have a chance to address any questions that arise during the public comment period following the public comments. So at this point.
Could I ask one more question?
Go ahead, councilman.
Yeah. In Ryan's proposal, he obviously, he was asking for 19 additional lots, and he also indicated the concept of, of removing a fence that had been decided upon along the roadway. My question is, did, is the removal of that fence and going to a berm, is that required to meet the additional need for space for the 19 additional units?
Is that for me, Mr. Owen?
Yes.
I do not believe so.
Speak to that run.
Yeah, Lee, I'll, I'll.
No, no, that has, that has nothing to do with that at all. That's two different things. And the fencing was not along the roadway. The berm actually along the roadway or along the Shamrock Drive has always been in place and still being in place. The fencing was to be removed on the rear of the lots, which had nothing to do with the lot widths at all.
And Harold, you mentioned 19 lots, actually 22.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, we made the, I think the analogy was made that there's five existing lots.
Right, right.
So it really was a net 17, but 22 is the formal request.
All right. So as we'll begin our public hearing, if anyone wishes to speak, we ask to use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. Our staff will alert me and will call on you by name or number. And just a reminder that everyone speaking needs to state their name and address for the public record. So at this time, we will receive public comments. And the first individual to be recognized is Dana. Dana, at this time, you may state your name and address for the public record and your comments.
Hi, my name's Dana Stewart. Live at 1443 Monroe Holt Road, Burlington. And the thing, I just wanted to say that the fence was behind my house. It was in agreement with the neighbors because he's building houses right up in our backyards. So the fence was for us to keep us a little privacy there. And I see he's wanting to take that out, and he's also wanting to put more houses along in our backyards. That's where the majority of those he is adding is going. So I'm just wondering if you approved it for him to make these deals, why are you going to, I mean, why would he come back and try and take away everything he had offered? I'm not understanding why he's doing that.
All right. Any, any further comments, Dana?
No, I apologize for chatting a while ago. I didn't realize I couldn't do that. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. The next individual to be recognized will be Ms. Tara Hart. If you could state your name and address for the public record.
Oh, I need to mute.
Ms. Tara Hart, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Very good. If you could state your name and address for the public record and then your comments.
Tara Hart, 1325 Berkshire Road in Burlington. I am a registered. Tara Hart, 1325 Berkshire Road in Burlington. I am a registered environmental health specialist for the city of Burlington, actually Alamance County. And I'm just curious about the sewer and the water lines going in for the people that are already there, because they are all on septic and wells.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Tara. As I mentioned, the team, Ryan, Lee, and Paul will have a chance to address your questions after public comment has concluded. So, all right. Any additional public comments or questions? Please use the raise hand feature or star nine right now. It has been noted by our clerk that there were no written public comments submitted. So at this time, I will recognize Lee, Ryan, and Paul to address any of those questions that you wish to.
Yes, for the first question about the fencing and the landscaping behind their property, it's also very good to point out, and I'll let Mike speak on this some as well, that for the property, for the MDR, which this would have by right, there would be no fence required behind there, and the landscaping that's provided back there exceeds what would be required by just a regular by zoning right. The lots are the same for that. The second question the panelist was asking is about the water lines to be extended. The water lines would be public water lines, City of Burlington Water Lines. And I won't speak for Burlington, but you can address how that has to be used, how the City of Burlington will allow them to tap into those lines, but they are required to come down Shamrock Drive and can be accessible. But I'll let Burlington speak to their water lines.
Who, a staff member present who would like to just quickly address the tap process to a city line?
Todd, are you on? Yes, I'm here. So once those lines are installed and turned over and accepted by the City of Burlington, then they would be eligible for any other water lines that we have any place in the city or in the ETJ area. There's an application process that a resident would go through to submit their connection to the line. Single-family units is handled at the staff level and through manager approval, and then they could tap to the water and/or sewer as they would be installed adjacent to their properties. There's a substantial amount of water line being installed as part of this development. There are some sewer lines being installed along Shamrock Drive, and we have requested and required the developer to extend other sewer lines to Shamrock Drive so that there could be connections to them in the future as either residents needed that or wanted that, should they have filling septic systems or wells.
Very good. Thank you. We have an additional public comment. This time, we'll recognize Mr. Brian Bryce. Mr. Bryce, if you could, state your name and address for the public record and your comments.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name is Brian Bryce, 127 West Hargett Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. And I'm an attorney, and speaking also on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Marvin Beaker and Lori Mills, who are residents in the Shamrock neighborhood there. And a couple of the comments is, I know that Mr. Moffett had stated that, based on today's conditions, that the property is being underutilized or in some way, and I'm just not sure what he means by that, in that it appears that the conditions are basically the same, is the same acreage, it's the same lot sizes, so to speak, and is basically the same plan that was brought to the city council a couple of years ago after extensive negotiation between, not myself, but Mr. Frank Longest and the residents around that he represented that live adjacent to or across the street from the golf course. I'm representing the folks that we just mentioned, who have, we allege implied easement rights to not only the golf course, but the lake and all the open space, the roadways, particularly the still private roadway that's there, the clubhouse, et cetera. And that's still an issue. I wanted to alert the council that both the defendants in the lawsuit that we're engaged in, which is Henson Realty, had filed a counterclaim to quiet title regarding these easement rights. And we had obviously filed for declaratory judgment action about whether or not our clients, Ms. Mills and the Beakers, and some of the other residents, potentially had implied easement rights to the golf course and the other pieces, roadway, the lake, et cetera. Judge Hobgood dismissed both of our claims for failure to our complaint and quiet title action filed by defendants for failure to name the rest of the property owners. And so we are in the process of refiling our complaint. It was dismissed with leave to refile our complaint. And so the bottom line is, we're having to bring the rest of the 80-some property owners who are in that ring around the Shamrock Golf Course, all whose property have references on their deed to a golf course and the other pieces. I don't think the conditions have changed as pertains to what was before council before. It was negotiated. I can't understand or see what the reason is to change what was agreed to before. In fact, Mr. Moffett also made mention of how the great demand for outdoor recreational use, and that includes golf and golf courses. In fact, there's a pretty good January 30th Wall Street Journal article about the boom in golf usage and play from this past year, and it's just continuing to increase. And we see that, and believe that the golf course, if allowed to have been put back into place, would have been booming at this juncture. So that point aside, on behalf of the folks who I'm representing at this juncture, before we refile our action, which was not decided on the merits, it was, you know, just on procedural grounds, we're going to fix the procedure, that we don't believe that there's any real change in circumstances. And I know that my folks would like for what was agreed upon by the council then, under the same circumstances, remain the same. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryce. Attorney Huffman, did you have any questions for Mr. Bryce while I was here?
We can, Mr. Bryce, those two individuals you're representing, they have not moved in the course of the last two years, have they?
No, they have not.
Okay, we got their address. Thank you.
Yeah. I think the Beakers have been out there since the mid-'60s. And Lori Mills, her father, who's out there too, has been out there since the beginning of the Shamrock Estates development.
We're fine, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any further public comments? If you wish to speak now, please use the raise hand feature or star nine. If you have any technical challenges regarding connecting or indicating that you wish to speak, please call John Vernon at 336-513-5440. Just a moment if there are any further public comments. All right. Hearing no further public comments. Ryan, did you have something you want to add?
I do. Quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I know we've got a loaded agenda this evening, so I don't want to belabor this. I really didn't want to discuss the litigation, because this is a land use question before the council this evening. Mr. Bryce's question about the underutilization, that's from a land use standpoint. 219 lots does not make good, efficient use of this property under the city's land use and residential land use policies, simply put. And that's been exhibited throughout the discussion over what the development ordinance would allow by right. From a litigation standpoint, Mr. Bryce is correct. His clients have rung the bell on this property. Until a judge decides those issues on the merits, it's going to be hard to do anything. Did not want to make this about the ongoing litigation, but instead about the land use, and that's what's before you this evening. As far as any controversy that this matter has courted since the beginning, I would just remind you of Henson Realty's role as it pertains to its request to make use of this property. The Walker family determined that it was no longer suitable or sustainable as a golf course. They listed this property for sale with a broker on the open market. Henson Realty purchased the property for fair market value from the Walker family. Henson Realty proposed to redevelop the property, and at the outset of that process, invited the surrounding neighborhood to review the plan, offer feedback, and take part in the planning process. Henson Realty committed to the surrounding neighborhood that he would honestly consider their feedback and would be open to making changes to his plan. Henson Realty, Paul Mylum, and Virginia Mylum, the principals of Henson Realty, willingly and without objection, took part in months-long negotiations, which ultimately resulted in a long list of concessions and conditions, many of which are not customary land use conditions, that should be noted, to secure neighbor support and council approval. Henson Realty permitted the neighborhood group to continue to operate the Shamrock Golf Course under lease during the pendency of its zoning request. And in any event, until it could break ground on its development. On approval of the plan, Mr. Bryce's clients immediately sued Henson Realty, notwithstanding six months of negotiations and agreement. I don't know who the parties to that agreement were, but the lawsuit, the parties to the lawsuit certainly didn't appear to be a part of that agreement. Henson Realty's been in the defense of that lawsuit for two and a half years. Since the very beginning, my clients have been nothing but reasonable, open, and cooperative with those that have objected to the plans for the redevelopment of this property at every turn. From a land use standpoint, I think the decision is obvious. I think if council acts, it will help spur progress. But that's all I'll say about that. It's not about the litigation. It's about the land use. As far as the city is concerned, and we are doing everything we can to shake the property of the claims of Mr. Bryce's clients. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Hearing no further public comments, I'm going to recognize our city attorney briefly to mention the nature of NCGS 166A 19.24E regarding a 24-hour public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you're aware, beginning of the last meeting in the city council, we were having public hearings, and now we need to comply with North Carolina General Statute 166A-19.24, and specifically subparagraph E, which pertains to public hearings during this state of emergency for COVID, and which that statute was passed by the legislature back in May of last year, and it provides for remote meetings, just as we are having now. As far as public hearings are concerned, it requires a period of time of 24 hours following tonight's meeting, that the matter be held open, public hearing be held open, so that any individual who would like to submit a written comment to the city for your consideration has that time to do so. And following that 24-hour period, you can continue this public hearing, and it's true of all public hearings tonight, you can continue that over to a time and date certain, date and time certain, to do that. We've had some discussion during the course of the day, I have with each and every one of you. I was trying to figure if we could come up with a time. It seems that it may be that the consensus would be for Thursday, the 18th, two days from now, at 9:15 a.m. in the morning, maybe a good time. I think that's what you did at the last meeting. But of course, that's all in the discretion of the city council.
I will entertain a motion from our council regarding continuing this to a date certain. Do I hear a motion from council?
Mayor, I make a motion pursuant to NCGS 166A-19.24B. I move that this public hearing be continued to Thursday, March 18, 2021, 9:15 a.m. via Zoom for the sole purpose of allowing additional written comments to be submitted for a 24-hour period beyond the close of this meeting.
Very good. Thank you, council member. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I second that.
All right. Any questions regarding the motion to continue to March 18 at 9:15 a.m.? All right. All those council members in favor of the motion, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Brotem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen to continue this to the morning of March 18 at 9:15 a.m. to receive written public comment. Council will convene at that point for further action on this. While we do have the team from Henson Realty here, I do want to ask if there are any further council questions for those individuals before we move on to our next agenda item.
I do not, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your time tonight in the councils as well.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Council members, any other questions? All right. And as noted by our attorney, we will likely continue the rest of these public comment periods using that same date and time meeting now set. So at this time, we will move on to item three on our public hearings. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone from MI Medium Industrial District to LDR Low Density Residential District. The properties are located on the south side of Hatchery Road, approximately 2,200 feet east of Alamance Road, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 121184, and being a portion of 121183. At this time, I'll recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation again, Mike Nun.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. Before I jump into the zoning maps and land use maps, just wanted to orient folks that we knew where the last case was located, just to orient you on an aerial where this site is located. This is the interstate, the Home Depot, Alamance Road, and this, of course, is Hatchery. This is the site you see hatched here. Let's pull up the zoning map. Again, see the site here as well. This is a request to rezonate 2.8 acres, track of a 2.83 total parcel from Medium Industrial to Low Density Residential. The property is located on the south side of Hatchery Road, just east of suburban Mobile Home Court Drive. The portion of the site that is outside the city limits would need the petition for annexation in city utilities if approved. The comprehensive land use plan calls for the area to be general industrial. The proposed zoning is inconsistent with the land use plan in that it is located within an area that has potential for industrial growth and may have a negative impact on possible future industrial development. The proposed low-density residential district zoning would not be compatible with the surrounding areas' existing industrial zoning and existing uses. Staff did recommend denial of this at the P and Z meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission received this information February 22. The commission voted on a four to three motion to approve the request. I'll go back to the land use map. I'll go back to the land use map. As you can see, the purple is the industrial area I spoke of, and you see the site hatched. They're outlined in red. I will be glad to answer any other questions, and I believe Mr. Ryan Moffett is here as well to represent this applicant.
Good, thank you, Mike. Any questions from council?
I have one. I was out there today and thought I saw a house on the property. Is that correct?
There is one to the rear, yes, ma'am. Just behind the parcel, one question. If everybody can see that, I can zoom in.
So the only access to that is from Hatchery Road, is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Moffett, at this time, you'd like to speak regarding this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nun, members of council. Pleased to be here also this evening representing the Harmon family, specifically Mr. J. Patrick Harmon, who is with me in our office this evening and is listening in. And if there are specific questions for him, is available to answer those as well. This is a unique request and a unique situation in that Mr. Harmon's parents purchased this property, this property and the four adjacent parcels around it in nineteen forty and have owned, the family has owned those properties continuously since that time. For the record, I'll just add Ryan Moffett, Verin Law Firm, five-twenty-two South Lake Simpson Avenue. Harmon family owned those four adjacent parcels, including the subject property. They also have one-two-zero-nine-six-five and six-six. That's about eighteen and a half acres. One-two-one-one-eight-two is roughly eight acres. That's the parcel with the existing home on it. The subject property is one-two-one-one-eight-three and eight-four. That's seven and a half acres. Mr. Harmon is requesting to rezonate two of the seven and a half acres. And the Hayden Harmon Foundation, that's the family charitable foundation, owns the four-acre tract identified as one-two-one-one-eight-five. And all is roughly thirty-eight to forty acres that the family has owned or controlled for the last eighty-plus years. Mr. Harmon grew up on the property with his family. He's currently lives on Tarleton Avenue. His son David lives in the house that's currently on the property adjacent to this. That house was built in nineteen fifty-two and was the family home, like I said, which is, his son currently resides at. Mr. Harmon's purpose in seeking this rezoning is to build a house of his own on these two acres and finish out the remainder of retirement there. He grew up there, as I said, and liked to return to the family farm, so to speak. As Mike, Mr. Nun noted, this did come before Planning and Zoning Commission back in its February meeting and received a favorable recommendation for approval by a vote of four to three. I will say, notwithstanding that the proposed zoning from the existing Medium Industrial to the proposed Low Density Residential, notwithstanding that the proposed rezoning doesn't match the prescription set forth in the future land use plan, I think you'll find that the particular circumstances of this request pose no real threat of compromise or disruption of the city's fully carrying out its future land use plan for this property and the surrounding areas. Moreover, I think you'll also find that this request is indeed reasonable and in the public interest. For starters, this proposed request is consistent with existing surrounding land uses. The two-acre parcel proposed for rezoning is almost entirely surrounded by residential or some form of residential use. You have the Suburban Mobile Home Park to the north. To the northwest is also a single-family home. The Harmon family property has been used as a residential property in all of its years. To the east and to the south is the existing Harmon family home place. Aside from the airport, there is little to no existing industrial use in the area. It's also important to note that there are almost no general uses, meaning general industrial or general business or general commercial with which residential use in the form of a single home, one house, is truly incompatible. In other words, one house is not so incompatible with general other uses that it would influence a change in the character of those more high-impact, heavy uses in the area. We're not talking about a Shamrock-like development here. We're talking about one single house. Think the best way to illustrate the situation that this property finds itself in is that not fifteen months ago, as we discussed with Shamrock, the city adopted its current development ordinance. Prior to adoption of that development ordinance, the Harmon property and the surrounding areas were zoned I-1A, which is planned industrial residential. Residential uses were permitted by right on this property. As soon as the current development ordinance was invented, the Harmon family lost the entitlement to build a house on the property, on one of these other parcels. If the position is that a two-acre home site is truly to be considered generally incompatible with medium industrial uses, is it so terribly incompatible that eighty-year-long property owner who has a request to build a house on his property should be denied? When you consider the circumstances, I would say that the reasonable way to go is to approve the single home. While the proposal doesn't necessarily track what the city wants to see for the property in the future, it doesn't mean that the proposal will disrupt the city's future plans for the area. In other words, we can take some comfort in knowing that historically speaking, a standalone home can harmoniously exist with surrounding industrial uses. Notwithstanding that there is little industrial use in the immediate area, other than the airport, no known industrial prospects for this property other than the airport, which and Mr. Danieli spoke up at the Planning and Zoning Meeting and noted that that the Harmon property is being looked at and studied by the airport and affiliated authorities for future interests. And to that degree, it seems to me that any future use of this property is going to be airport-associated, if not purchased or condemned at some point. It seems to me the property is spoken for by the airport. It's also a reasonable land use, and our general statutes give us a great guide for what to look for in considering a reasonable, what is a reasonable land use. There's five factors. The first, size, physical conditions, and attributes of the zoning area. This is two small acres out of hundreds of other available sites for industrial use. The zoning area is encumbered by a one-hundred-foot-wide AT&amp;T easement that runs along the road frontage. It's not conducive to other construction. You're only going to fit a house in this area. The zoning area is concentrated towards the road so as not to intrude or make unnecessary use of other portions of the property that could potentially be used for industrial development. Again, it shouldn't be expected that the AT&amp;T easement, along with height restrictions and frequent air traffic from the airport, is going to be conducive to vertical development or substantially vertical development. The second factor, benefits and detriments to the landowners, neighbors, and surrounding community. A single house on two acres of land is one of the simplest, low-impact, unintrusive zoning uses or proposed uses that could be made of this property. Not only will it not disrupt current uses, but it's consistent with current uses. Nor does the use impose on the property or its surrounds in a way that would disrupt the future proposed use or future expected use. Under the proposed zoning, the requested zoning, to accommodate a single house, the property will, for all intents and purposes, continue to sit and wait for the time to come for redevelopment or a change of use consistent with the city's future plans. A single-family home is not going to stop what the city has planned for this area of its jurisdiction. The third factor, the relationship between the current actual and permissible development in the zoning area and adjoining areas and the development permissible under the proposed amendment. I've already discussed consistency and compatibility. The proposed use is compatible as a standalone home with permissible development for the property and its surroundings. It is consistent and harmonious with existing uses in the surroundings. I've put that point to bed. The fourth factor, changed conditions that warrant the amendment. The same zoning under the prior development ordinance just fifteen months ago would have permitted this use by right. The simple procedure of adopting the new UDO caused the Harmon family to lose the right to use the property for residential purposes. And finally, the fifth statutory factor, why the proposed use is in the public interest. Well, the quintessential manner of enjoying the ownership of private property is to be able to build a home and live on land that you own. It's of minimal, if any, impact on neighbors and others, and it's a basic but fundamental advantage of owning real property. That sentiment is certainly fortified over the Harmon family's eighty years owning this property. Moreover, when it can be determined based on a particular set of facts in a given situation that a proposed use such as this one, which may be technically inconsistent with a land use plan, but reasonable, low-impact, and would not otherwise disrupt the spirit of that plan, it's absolutely in the interest of the public to favor and promote the free use of private land in the form of proposals like the one before you this evening. With all of that said, I just want to make a couple of comments about the applicant, progress, and the city's future plans. I will say, Mr. Harmon has undertaken this process with clear eyes and reasonable expectations. He understands why the city has a comprehensive land use plan, and he appreciates smart planning, careful growth. He appreciates that as part of developing a healthy community. This is not just lip service. He, his wife, and his family have made this community their mission through time, resources, and hard work on its behalf in many ways that we see and feel every day in the city of Burlington and greater Alamance County. Mr. Harmon understands what's going to happen to his family's property one day. He has no interest in stopping it. And as a responsible citizen, he sees it as inevitable and probably necessary. But until that time comes, he would like to build a house and live on the family property. It's as simple as that. And that's not beyond the pale of reason. In fact, it is the very essence of a reasonable use of your own property. Just to summarize, Mr. Harmon is requesting to rezonate two acres of his family's land from Medium Industrial to Low Density Residential to build himself a home. This request deserves your wholehearted support. It's consistent with the current uses of the property and surrounding properties. It's generally and historically accepted as compatible generally with the prescribed future uses. It's a reasonable use for all the statutory reasons that I set out above, and it's in the public interest to allow Mr. Harmon to construct a home on this property that his family has owned and put so much into for nearly a hundred years. As always, we appreciate your consideration of the request. I'm very happy to answer any questions you have. It's a special piece of property to the Harmon family. I hope you all understand that and can see the motivation and the reason behind this request and as such, support it just the same. Thank you very much and happy to answer any questions. And again, Mr. Harmon is available too, if you have any questions directed for him.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Mr. Harmon, is there anything you'd like to add before we begin the public hearing? Council, any questions for Mr. Moffett and Mr. Harmon before we begin public hearing? All right, with that, we are on public hearing item number three. If you do wish to speak regarding this item, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you are joining us via phone to indicate that you wish to speak on this. If you are experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at three-three-six-five-one-three-five-four-four-zero. Again, we are on public hearing, item number three on our agenda. Anyone wishing to speak needs to use the raise hand feature or star nine to indicate that they wish to do so at this time. Our clerk has indicated that there were no written comments received for this item.
I'm Dan Danieli. I don't see a raise hand feature.
I assume Dan Danieli would like to speak as he just went off mute. Dan, if you would, just state your name and address for the public record and your comments.
Good evening. I'm Dan Danieli. I represent the Burlington Alamance Airport Authority, thirty-four forty-one North Aviation Drive in Burlington. So good evening, and thank you for hearing me. I couldn't find the raise hand feature, so I was calling John for help. First of all, I want to thank you all for the foresight to have rezoned this property a couple of years ago to Medium Industrial. We are growing around the airport. There are a lot of plans or a lot of questions from the economic development people with the state and locally about the properties surrounding the airport and industrial growth. So we're excited about that. A lot of aerospace industry are looking at Alamance County, the Burlington Airport, so we're excited about our potential. At the P and Z meeting a few weeks ago, I shared with the group that we are targeting the property, looking at it not only for the growth, but also for clearing approach areas into the airport. And so, Mike, Mike Nun, could you pull up PDF number one that we can show the group? So on this, on this drawing, you'll see the red box where Mr. Harmon proposes to build. And you can see all the many lines and things. Those blue lines represent departure clear zone areas or approach clear zone areas from the end of the runway. And you can see the end of the runway where it currently is with an extended seven hundred feet planned in the not-too-distant future to come out and take it to seven thousand feet. So with that, after going to, or us being in the P and Z meeting, we got with our engineers, we're doing a master plan right now. It's an ongoing plan that will take about one year to complete. But I asked them to go ahead and take a look at this particular two-acre tract so that we could get answers back for tonight's meeting. So on that particular tract, an item can be built, a structure can be built as high as seventy-one feet above the ground.
and not impede or impede in our flight approach area. So, the study does show that you can't build something that tall. We will be seeking an navigation easement over that property to ensure that nothing gets built taller than that. It's set at seven-to-one approach, so as you get closer back to the center line of the runway, the heights would go lower. If you look at the existing house, there are some trees around the house. The house will not impede, but there are some trees around that house that right now are beginning to encroach. And we'll be speaking with the Harmon's about topping some trees in the not-too-distant future for safety. You might want to ask, well, why is this a concern? That's not exactly in line with the runway. When we're talking about approaches when it's cloudy, can't see the runway, you're flying on instruments, and actually, as you're making your approach, you get to a point where you still can't see the runway. You have to do a go-around. So, you have to have FAA-approved approaches to tell you how to go around and try again for another approach or go to a different airport. So, safety areas where you're not going to hit something. But with that, you can build something 71 feet tall there. So, I guess what I really want to share tonight, and I do remember at the P&amp;Z hearing, another resident spoke up who owned nearby land. He said, "Well, if you approve this rezoning, I'm next in line because I want to get some apartments built out there on some properties I own." So, that would be something for you all to be challenged with. My big concern with this is we have over 70,000 flight operations per year. That averages out around 200 per day. Some days are more, some days are less. We will not have a harmonious neighbor when he moves into his home. He will not have that quiet and peaceful enjoyment that we all enjoy. So, my concern is that Mr. Harmon would understand he will not get good night's sleep. There is one period of time, we're working right now with some contractors to try to get a little maintenance done on the runway. We'll have to close the runway for that work. And right now, we have found a window between 4:00 AM and 6:00 AM that there are no scheduled flights. So, please be aware that there's going to be a lot of noise, a lot of flights. It's increased tremendously since Mr. Harmon used to live next door. And that will be my big concern. We want our neighbors happy, and I'm just so afraid he will become a very unhappy neighbor very soon. Questions of me about our plans and growth?
Thank you, Mr. Danieli. We appreciate your comments this evening. Any questions from counsel for Mr. Danieli? All right. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Again, please use the raise hand feature or star nine to indicate that you wish to do so. All right. Hearing no further public comments. Any further counsel questions?
If I could ask Dan, Dan, back to the original map, we show down the runway extension, which is where the raised tan area is now. And then, you show the two light-blue striped areas on the left and the right. Now, help me, are they themselves the... We talk about obviously planes coming in and landing and taking off. Are they the primary routes that people normally come in or would be coming in or going or taking off on?
They're part of the FAA-designed and approved approach cleared area. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so, so the blue lines are actually transitioning as a seven-to-one upslope. So, you go out seven feet and up one. The more yellow area directly in front of the runway is kept a part of a level area with slight increases going out. So, think of it as a sort of a side of a funnel as it going up over the house. So, if that house were to be closer to the runway, then it would need to be, that 71 feet would come down drastically the closer it got to the center line. So, you are hoping that no airplane drifts out that over that house when it's making an approach into the airport, but it can't. And again, we're talking about during instrument conditions and shooting the approaches. And so, certain areas have to be cleared for safety reasons just because if a pilot gets off of his beam. And so, that's what this is about. And again, that house can be as tall as 71 feet right there, but it will be part of an approach, which is logged. It's kind of like a roadmap that the pilots use. Imagine closing your eyes. You can only see the instruments. And so, you're following these different parameters to bring you to the airport, and you can't see anything other than your instruments. So, you have these cleared areas to make sure you don't make a boo-boo.
Boo-boo being a light term for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel member Owen, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Any further counsel questions at this time?
Mayor, I've got one. Just sort of thinking, and Mr. Danieli brought it up, that there was a speaker at P&amp;Z that said, you know, I might be interested in doing apartments or something like that. That's all speculative, but let's just say this is approved. Just assume for just a minute, and then someone wanted to do something similar like apartments. I understand it would not be consistent with the land use plan, but would it then be consistent with adjacent uses?
Side question for Mr. Nunn?
Yeah.
I can speak, yeah. You would see a different staff report on that, and we would have to, we would mention the existing uses as one being residential. So, it could be compatible or similar to adjacent uses.
So, it could open up a little door for a compatibility debate. Not the land use plan, but consistent or compatible with adjacent uses.
Correct.
Other counsel questions? All right. As we discussed on the previous public hearing item, there's a requirement to extend a 24-hour period for written comment. Do I hear a motion from counsel to continue this item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion to continue pursuant to NCGS 166A-19.24E to allow for a 24-hour period. Counsel member Owen, I assume your motion is to move this to, or continue this to the Thursday meeting at 9:15 AM?
Correct, yes.
All right. Any questions regarding the motion to continue? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Any further questions for Mr. Moffett or Mr. Harmon while they are here? All right.
Can I just add one real quick?
Yes.
If we could do this, if Mr. Harmon could build his house and leave it MI, he would do it in a heartbeat. And that's how much respect he has. It's just that I don't know how old he is, and I'm not going to venture into that. But he just wants to settle on his family property by building a house, does not want to disrupt, but also doesn't want to lose this simple ability to enjoy his property. So, I hope y'all will give that some thought, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your time this evening. This item is, again, continued to our March 18th meeting to allow for 24-hour notice for written comment. All right, next on our agenda is item four, public hearing. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone from MDR Medium Residential District to O&amp;I Office Institutional District. The property is located at the southeast corner of Grand Oaks Boulevard and Huffman Mill Road, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112469. This time, I'd like to recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nunn.
Good evening again, mayor and council. As mayor mentioned, this location is Huffman Mill Road and Grand Oaks at the intersection. It is a 22-acre parcel roughly that is being requested from medium-density residential to office and institutional. It is just south of the Alamance Regional Medical Center campus, and the site will require annexation and connection to city utilities if rezoned. Comprehensive plan calls for the area to be rural, residential, agricultural. This proposed use is of a higher intensity than called for in that land use plan. However, the adjacent office uses and institutional properties, and then the concentration of existing uses, such as I mentioned on the campus of ARMC, are compatible with the request. City staff did recommend approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which heard this case on February 22nd. They did, excuse me, review the request and did unanimous approval at the February 22nd meeting. Mr. Brian Hall is here to answer any questions, and I can also answer questions you have. This is a straight rezoning with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Nunn. Mr. Hall, anything you'd like to add on this?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, nice to see you guys. Hope everyone is well. Appreciate the opportunity. Brian Hall from Sammatt 309 Gallimore Dairy Road, Greensboro. This is a simple continuation of Sammatt's development efforts under consideration for this particular parcel. We think it's a good candidate, potentially, for our continuation of development efforts for office and institutional there around the hospital. And so, part of our consideration of if it's a good candidate is certainly obtaining the correct and proper zoning, which we are requested before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any questions from counsel regarding this item before we begin the public hearing? All right. So, again, we are on item four of our public hearing agenda this evening. If anyone is in attendance and wishes to speak regarding this item, you may use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone to indicate that you wish to make a comment. Again, if anyone is having any technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. Our staff has indicated there were no written comments submitted on this so far. So, again, if anyone in attendance wishes to speak regarding this item, item four on our agenda of public hearings, please use the raise hand feature or star nine now. Last call for public comments. All right, hearing no further comments, I will entertain a motion to continue from counsel.
Mayor Pers went to NCGS 166A-1924E. I would move that this public hearing be continued to Thursday, March 18th at 9:15 AM via the Zoom platform for the sole purpose of allowing additional written comments to be submitted for a 24-hour time period beyond the close of this meeting.
Thank you, counsel. Do I hear a second to that? Motion to continue to our Thursday meeting made by council member Butler, seconded by council member Owen, or sorry, Ward. Any questions regarding the motion to continue? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Any further questions for Mr. Hall on this?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate the consideration.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to item five on our public hearing agenda. Public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone from MDR Medium Industrial District to, I believe that should be Medium Density Residential to PD Plan Development. The property is located on the east side of St. Mark's Church Road, just south of the terminus of Rural Retreat Road and approximately 500 feet north of Boone Station Drive, addressed as 1408 St. Mark's Church Road, and referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106976. This time, we will again enter, recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nunn.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a rezoning request. On the map, on the screen, you currently see the hatched area that's to be rezoned. To orient you, Alamance Crossing is just to the south, and then Rural Retreat Road is here, and St. Mark's Church Road runs along the front edge. This is a request to rezonate 6.4 acres from Medium Density Residential to Plan Development District to allow 205 multifamily development. The plan development proposed is the first one requested under the new UDO, and the applicant has worked with city staff to develop a concept plan for the site. The plan development zoning is designed to improve the quality of development while allowing flexibility on the size and scope of the overall development. The concept plan includes several items that improve the quality of the development and exceed the requirements of the UDO. I'll put that up now. This is the concept plan for the plan development. These items include pedestrian improvements, which include greenways and sidewalks on the site and also connecting to Alamance Crossing. A pedestrian crossing will be provided at St. Mark's and Rural Retreat Road, and a sidewalk will be constructed from the site all the way to the entrance to Joe Davison Park on Rural Retreat Road. The site will have enhanced landscaping with larger calipso trees at the site entrance. They will have improved design features for the buildings along St. Mark's Church Road and offer additional public space along the greenway. A neighborhood meeting was also held by the applicant to discuss the project and to get input on the design. The comprehensive plan, land use plan, calls for the area to be regional commercial. Real quick. The proposed zoning is consistent with the land use plan in that commercial zoning allows multifamily uses, and the planned development zoning district requires development to be of a higher quality than what would have resulted from the general standards of the UDO. The proposed high-density residential use of the planned development zoning would provide a good transition between the Alamance Crossing retail development and the medium-density single-family uses along Berkshire Road and Willow Oak here in the yellow. City staff recommended approval at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on February 22nd and had unanimous approval of this request. Mr. Trey Riddle was here to present the application, and I can answer any questions you have as well.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Riddle, is there anything you'd like to add on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. And, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time, opportunity to present this to you. The subject property is 6.844 acres. As Mike mentioned, the property has been through Technical Review Committee with the city of Burlington and has been approved by staff. The rezoning request was unanimously, unanimously, excuse me, approved by the Planning and Zoning Board at the meeting on Monday, February 22nd. The modification from MDR to the PD development standards set forth in this conceptual master plan will allow for apartment product that provides a harmonious transition from medium-density residential zoning to the north and conditional business district zoning to the south. The site in question is physically located between an existing retail center to the south in Alamance Crossing and a single-family residential subdivision to the north. I believe that this property offers an opportunity as a placemaker for the overall area when viewed independently and provides a pivotal land planning component. The project itself will act as a screen between the residential area to the north and the commercial uses to the south. The residential nature of the proposed PD will also offer architecture that is both visually pleasing on the front and rear elevations of the structure and more in line with the residential use that exists to its north. I believe that this is the highest and best use for the site. The PD zoning requires a developer to provide a development of higher quality than the UDO would provide on its own. In order to meet this requirement, I have committed to the five-foot sidewalk connections to Josie Davidson Park, Davidson Park, excuse me, and Alamance Crossing Shopping Center, both of which Mike mentioned previously. These connections will additionally tie into the Greenway Trail that has been proposed on the conceptual master plan. Enhanced landscaping will be provided with two canopy trees, four shade trees, and 15 shrubs every 100 foot along the residential lotlines. And the street buffer itself will contain two canopy trees and two understory trees per 100 foot along the street frontage. In addition, four of the canopy trees located on the frontage will be of a six inch caliper, which is much larger than the UDO requires. In addition to the landscaping and off-site pedestrian improvements, I've also agreed to design the facades on the buildings that front St. Mark's Church Road as a primary wall, which will greatly improve the aesthetic of the property from the road. Finally, there is an enhanced open space element, which is new to the UDO in the addition of the urban open space component that's shown at the upper corner in the closest location to the park. Equally as important to me and in conjunction with the city of Burlington, a 15 by 15 foot easement will be dedicated to the city to construct a bus shelter and a bus stop will be added to the city bus route for this location. That bus route will obviously flow into the existing pedestrian crossings that we will be developing and allow for ease of access for folks that are using public transit to both shopping and to park. I held a neighborhood meeting on February 9th, as mentioned, in which I did discuss the site with the neighbors and address concerns and questions regarding the rezoning application. Overall, the feedback from that meeting was positive. And the neighbors seemed to agree with me in that meeting and it seemed in the previous meeting of planning and zoning that this is a better use than more retail for the site. From that meeting, it is clear that the neighbors also very much value their privacy and safety that their homes currently provide them. And to that point, I agreed to a fence between my site and between my site and theirs along the shared lot line with residential, existing residential homes to limit the interaction and interference in their daily lives with the Greenway Trail that we will be constructing. In reviewing the Destination Burlington Comp Plan, I believe that the more intensive commercial options of the future land use designation of residential commercial are not appropriate for the site. What is appropriate is the lesser use as defined in that same use under Destination Burlington Comp Plan that does allow for high density multifamily residential and encourages pedestrian and bicycle connectivity to surrounding areas, which this project will deliver. I feel this supports our goal of creating a transitional land use that will benefit the future residents of the project community and the existing residents of Burlington. In reviewing the surrounding existing development of the site, this site is of similar use to the Retreat at the Park, which is located across the street at 122 Retreat Lane and the Chase Apartments, which are located at 3508 Garden Road. Those developments are within 500 feet of the proposed development. And with that, I'll welcome any questions for council or anyone from the public. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing?
Just, I've got one quick question. The, the the blue line to the south in the screen that connects to the retail development sort of gets a little muted and squiggly there, that's obviously a very odd entrance. That's a, that's an odd ingress, egress point to, to that retail facility. If you've ever used it, doesn't flow well. Is, is that just markings on the, on the, on the pavement there? Is that a sidewalk? What is that? Or is that just a conceptual access point?
Yeah, so I can address that. That is both. So there will be a actual five foot sidewalk that's been agreed to with the city, Mr. Butler. That will load up to the existing asphalt that you see there with the curb.
Okay.
And then it'll be a marked painted basically pedestrian walk across there to allow for folks to safely cross that area. And then it will then tie into how that line curves and then goes to the actual structure of the shopping center, that corner. There is an existing sidewalk that runs around the, the exterior of that, of that center. And so the goal is to, to tie that in so that it, so that it does flow well, to your point.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
If I could continue that conversation, the, the issue that I've seen there is not so much people coming off of of St. Mark's Church Road, but people coming from the front of the existing shopping area going back to, towards your development. And then with the way the access is there, they gotta kind of navigate to the right and then come back to the left very quickly. I think back to Jim's point, that's a, that is an unusual traffic pattern. And I would only ask that, that there would be as, as much conversation between the developer and our, our staff as possible to, to navigate that in the most safe way possible. Because that's, that's an unusual, that's an unusual area there.
Yes, sir. Councilman Nun, I understand that. And what I would say is this is still conceptual in nature. We will be working with staff on exactly how this. I don't know if you've lost me there. Not my, my connections are all unstable. Can you hear me now?
You're good. Yes, we got you.
We will, I will be working with staff directly. And we will have to go through a formal plan review with staff with construction drawings and that will obviously be one of the, one of the pieces. So we'll work out the kinks there 100%.
And we do recognize that you all did not create that hazardous traffic pattern. We're just.
That's right. No. Yeah. It's already there.
Yes, that's right.
Any other council questions before we begin the public hearing? All right. With that, again, we are on public hearing number five on our loaded agenda tonight. So if anyone wishes to speak regarding item five, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine. If you are having any technical connection difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. So our first public commenter this evening will be Ms. Tara Hart. Ms. Hart, if you could, just again for the public record, state your name and address as well as your comment.
Yes, this is Seth Hart, Tara Hart's husband. I live at 1325 Berkshire Road. I have a question about the apartment complex.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so.
Seems like you got it.
Oh, can you hear me again?
You can.
All right. So Trey, you talked about opening the Greenway up again to the public or no? I, I broke up a little bit when I was talking to you, when you were talking. You still have the arrows coming in or are we going to have a full fence all the way through?
So, Mr. Hart, that's something that, you know, really, I think we need to have a discussion with the city about. I understand the neighborhood would prefer for that to be a straight fence. My position hasn't changed, that I will build a straight fence there. But I, I do also understand that, that, that Greenway is going to be a public path and those streets are public streets. And so I think that that, the answer to that specifically is above both bar pay grades. But if the city will allow it, I will build it straight. I do understand that's what the neighbors want. And I know that that doesn't answer your question in a definitive manner, which is what you're looking for right now. But there are other stakeholders in that.
Um, sir, you actually said in the meeting with all of us that you would agree to that if the city would. And you're not agreeing to that. And we said that that's what we wanted because we have a Greenway access into Joe Davidson Park, that we don't need that. So what I'm actually asking is why did you lie to us?
I didn't lie to you, sir. What I just said to you, I think, was exactly what you just said to me. So we might be talking past one another, but I will build a straight fence if the city will allow me to build a straight fence, Mr. Hart. My position has not changed.
Mr. Hart, any further questions or comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak at this time, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. Our staff has indicated there were no written comments submitted on this item. So now would be the last chance if anyone wishes to speak, who's joining us for tonight's meeting. All right. It looks like no further comments. So counsel, I will entertain a motion to continue this item.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 166A-19.24E, I move that this public hearing be continued to Thursday, March 18th, 2021 at 9:15 a.m. via Zoom for the sole purpose of allowing additional written comments to be submitted for a 24 hour period beyond the close of this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion to continue to the March 18th meeting made by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to continue? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a raised hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Mr. Riddell, any further comments?
No, sir. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time, councilman and Ms. Hikes. I appreciate it and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, before we move into new business, we've been in session for about two hours. So without objection from counsel, we'll do a five minute break and we will be back here at 10 after, 10 after nine o'clock.
That, that's adorable.
Nice look there, Bob.
Yeah, that's, I thought it'd be appropriate, you know, in light of tomorrow.
Absolutely.
That's great.
That's pretty creative.
I didn't know where it's appropriate for a public hearing and all, but I think the rest of the agenda may be appropriate.
I think I still have my, my Link Transit foam hat that they handed out very personally Patty's day.
That's your second half of long meetings.
Bob, I like it a lot. I like that look.
Yeah, I thought I'd dress up for the rest of the meeting.
I figured I'd bring my green mask. All right, everyone, we'll go ahead and resume our meeting. At this time, we are moving on to our new business, item six this evening. City council will discuss appointments to the Community Police Advisory Team or CPAT to fill the remaining seats. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Community Engagement Manager, Morgan Laster.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this evening we bring before you a proposal of two additional applicants to the Community Police Advisory Team Board and Commission. These two appointments are from our judicial practitioners as well as from educators in our community that have applied. So council has received those applications and been able to communicate with John and I. And we have tallied that information we'll receive back from you guys and, and given that to you for consideration. So this evening you have a slate of two additional applicants for your consideration. And we are here to answer any questions and looking to see if council would like to consider approval of these to be added to our existing 16 CPAT applicants that have been appointed.
Very good. Thank you, Morgan. Any questions from council regarding the applicants put forward? And CPAT, to my understanding, they had their first meeting last week. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We did.
So getting, getting these additional applicants, they won't be too far behind and they'll help as per further, our previous discussions, kind of round out the skillset that we're looking for in that. as per further, our previous discussions kind of round out the skill set that we're looking for in that.
Yes, sir, and we're, we're happy to report that 15 of the 16 CPAT members were present for the first meeting. So that's very good.
Any council questions or do I hear a motion to approve the two additional individuals to the CPAT?
I would make a motion that we approve the additional two members as presented.
Second?
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with those for myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Morgan, John, thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, really, guys, that, that, I, I'll tell you, we've talked about it before, but what, what Morgan and John did on this was beyond my expectations. I really appreciate the effort you guys put forth on this. It was, it made our job really easy.
Thank, we appreciate that.
Ditto.
Thank you, Morgan and John. Mayor, would you like to read the names into the record? I don't know if everybody, all the audience has a packet.
So, um, the first applicant approved tonight is number 17, which was Rob Johnson. And the second one is candidate number 18, Joshua Lopez. So those two individuals have just been appointed to our CPAT. There still are about two more seats, so we are continuing to look for candidates. As well as we are accepting applications for all of our boards and commissions right now. So anyone interested in applying their skills and knowledge and passion for our community, you can complete an application online on the city's website and put your name in the hat for all of our numerous boards and commissions. But we are still looking for youth members for the CPAT. Part of the mission and kind of scope of that organization is to include perspectives from youth members of our community. So those are individuals under 18 years old. So if you know, if you are somebody, or if you know of somebody who is under 18, 18 or younger, and wishes to serve on the CPAT, is a Burlington resident, we would love to have their application and they can submit that online. Morgan, John, anything else about that application process?
Yeah, that, that application is still active and we are still actively looking for folks under 18, like you mentioned. So we're, we're still in contact with the school system. So we would love, love for folks to, to refer kids to, to get on that, that board with us.
Very good. All right, with that, we will move on to two staff reports that we have this evening. Staff report number one regarding our police headquarters building. At this time, I'll recognize our Police Chief, Jeff Smythe.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Thank you. Let me see if I can get this PowerPoint up.
Got your screen coming up now.
Showing the PowerPoint, right?
It is still loading in. The black screen right now.
Still black?
Yep.
Okay.
Rachel Harden, do we have backup PowerPoint?
I don't. So who's our guru here? You want to just advise the chief Smythe to try to reload and see if it comes back the second time?
Looks like Nolan. There we go.
Thank you, Nolan.
Nolan, appreciate that.
Nolan's the man.
All right, want to hit that first slide, Nolan, please? So folks, just a quick overview, we're going to cover tonight, just briefly, two phases of modifications to the existing police building. Phase one is some immediate security enhancements. And phase two are less critical but very important enhancements to the building, and I'll kind of cover those as we move forward. Nolan? So this is the front of the building as it exists today. Maybe we've moved those planters just a little bit. And I'd like to just discuss some of the compelling reasons why we have a need for security enhancements. So the next slide talks about several tragic circumstances around the country. In 2019 Fayetteville, Arkansas, an officer was ambushed and killed in his car in the parking lot. In 2015 in California, Officer Galvez was shot and killed at the parking lot of the police station. More regionally appropriate in Charlotte, in 2018, there was a shooting in the law enforcement center, the parking deck area. And then this was, you know, a result of just a few minutes of searching online. I knew about the Charlotte mech shooting, but the others, you know, just a quick search to show that increasing level of danger for police and police personnel around the station where bad actors can predict that we're going to be. So the next screen is the, the local incidents, two of them. In May of 2020, someone posted onto Facebook and invited people to a riot at the BPD headquarters building, listing our address and the, the date and time that they expected to have a riot take place at our building. We reacted swiftly. You know, we did things like recognize that we had landscape materials that could be used to smash windows. We had breach points around the building that we weren't able to secure. And so we felt like, you know, if we had a perimeter fence in the back in one side, that would decrease our risk and make that a safer place, a safer base of operation during that kind of incident. And then in November of 2020, we had a car crash into the lobby. It was a mentally ill individual who intentionally drove into the police department lobby. You know, moments before that crash, there had been a, a person waiting in the lobby for a police contact. And luckily she concluded her business and left the building before he crashed through the doors there. And that particular incident caused about $35,000 in damage. Got a few pictures of that. So here's the, the van as it had crashed in right where the left rear bumper of the van is. That's where the bench was that folks sit on when they wait to speak to a police officer. So you could see how tragic that would have been had a, had a person been sitting there. Just several more views of the, of the vehicle coming in. This one shows, you can see that if you've been in our building, most of you have, the, the big desk area there that used to be behind glass. The vehicle hit that massive piece of furniture and pushed it 12 to 18 inches backwards in the force of the collision. We had a desk person in that black chair at the time of the crash who was mostly uninjured, just a little bit banged up. No significant injuries, but it really gave us pause about what we needed to do to protect the building. And so I think the first step we're suggesting is bollards at the entries to help contain this, you know, vehicle threat that's a normal or a, a possibility, a very real possibility in today's day and age. Nolan, I think the next couple of slides start to discuss that. So bollards at the entry points of, of the doorways into the building, fence the perimeter of the parking lot, install access gates that will control so that only police personnel can, can enter those specific areas of, you know, safe areas for police personnel, both sworn and professional staff. That will require some mild reconfiguration of the parking lot to make it accessible, given the gates and their locations that we're proposing. And then the need to improve and revegetate that area. Some of you may have noticed that over the last six months, I think, we had a, some issues with the trees there that were of a certain age and the branches were falling and, and they had to be removed for safety reasons, but we intend to revegetate that area. So that's part of the process. In, in an immediate response to the car crashing into the building, those planters that used to be out near the sidewalk, we moved them a little closer to the building. What we've detected in this process is that makes the building less inviting. If there's, you know, barriers that close to the door, it's not as open as we want it to be. We want to be a transparent, available resource to the community. So I think the next picture shows those moved backwards. Well, it will in a second. So this is the type of bollard that we're considering. It's aesthetically pleasing, provides illumination at night. It doesn't make it look like, you know, big block barriers, cement barriers out in front of the police station. These are, are mounted into cement that's subterranean that holds them in place in a vehicle crash. They're required to be placed, I think, either on 36 or 42-inch centers based on the, the final product that we pick. And so the next picture shows a number of those illuminating the entire sidewalk area, creating this safe zone for pedestrians to walk in and out of the building and ensuring that vehicles don't crash into that, that area as well. The next couple of pictures show the other doorways. This is the back patrol division entrance. The next slide on the left shows the admin side, and then this picture on the right shows the EOC entry. That's right off of Church Street. So any questions on the bollards, what we've envisioned for them, or the aesthetic look of what we're proposing?
Questions from council on this?
When you say that they're, they're recommended to be 36 to 42 inches apart, what does that mean exactly?
That means that i- if you, if you place them more than a vehicle width apart, people can drive through them. If you place them exactly a vehicle distance apart, a vehicle would only hit one of them. But when you place them at 36 or 42 inches, then you're most likely to have an antagonistic person would drive in and hit more than one bollard. Two or more increases the chances of fully stopping the vehicle. So the, the bollard, while it's about six inches in diameter, they have to be close enough to each other that they support each other in that kind of strength capacity of stopping a vehicle. So 36 to 42 inches on center of each of those bollards.
Okay, but you, you're talking about the width of them, the width between them rather than how they would stand. I, I thought there were too many bollards on the, on that front door.
Yeah, and, and that's just a visual representation. It's not exact science there. The problem just becomes that you can't stretch them out too far apart, more than the manufacturer's recommendation, or they don't have the stopping capacity. So it's a balancing act. You could have less bollards but closer to the door. But then you get that visual uninvitedness. I'm not sure that's a word, but I think it communicates my intent. We want it to be open and inviting without that feeling of constriction. And so we have to follow the manufacturer's recommendations so that they'll be effective. So I'm not sure what the happy place is. It's still a work in progress and we would certainly welcome, you know, some additional input.
Chief, are there other vehicle blocking devices that you looked at?
Yeah, we, you know, we, we considered, you know, you could be like at, at Target, they have those massive concrete, you know, round boulders. And, you know, we very quickly discounted some of those ideas as, as just unsightly or occupying too much space or overly militaristic in some way. And we felt that this kind of design was, was sleek and, and effective and, and kind of met the best of both worlds, right? You want to marry up the visual appeal and the safety and security that I think we know we need after the vehicle attack.
Other questions from council?
And then perimeter fencing, there's a lot of different options on the market. Some are more appealing and less appealing. We haven't finalized a version of this. We recognize the need to use vegetation to make it more visually appealing. We've discussed concrete or brick or stone covered pillars at, at corners or at, at m-.
Did we lose the chief? Still with us, chief?
Just a second.
Chief, if you want to try and shut down your video to save bandwidth.
Continue to look at what those options are for the fencing material. The next slide, I think, shows the, the gates that would be employed or representative of gates that are available to allow access for the, the police employees. And then the next slide, I think, shows the, the map area, the space necessary for our employees. It's, you know, we've got sworn staff that are, that are mostly capable of defending themselves, even though we do see police officers killed in the line of duty in their back parking lots. But I, I want you to recognize that we also have our professional staff who are less capable of defending themselves, who come and go from the building at odd hours in ones and twos and not in entire, you know, squads that are coming or going, and we feel it's important to protect them in this day and age. So we're proposing the, this space and these number of spaces to support the, the on-duty staff in the building at, at any point in time during our, our regular operations. The next slide, I think, just shows a, a different view of the parking space configuration. The need to add some vegetation back in, that's all included in the plan. And if there's any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer. Yeah, you could leave it on the cost parameters, Nolan, that's fine. None, none of these renovations are cheap. They're, you know, expensive items. The, the materials are expensive and the installation, I think, is even more expensive.
Questions from council regarding these updates? Chief, I have a question for you. At the beginning, you talked about keeping the station and the, kind of the BPD transparent and available. And my concern, especially with the fencing, is this is so close to our Depot Plaza space of how do we kind of help you achieve your goal of protecting the police department and the safety of your officers, but not create a fortress imposing kind of feel that close to our, our city center?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure there's a, a perfect answer there, Mayor. I think that, you know, the first steps that we've taken are, are to push the fencing back further on the lot from Front Street so that when you're on Front Street, you see readily available parking, the city parking lot first, and then the visitor parking lot to the police department, and then the open facade of the police department that's immediately available for people to park and enter. That, that entryway will be unchanged. So the security enhancements are primarily either not as visible in the aesthetic bollards, or it's the fencing that's towards the back inside of the property that allow the employees to remain safe without, you know, intruding into the front area of the building.
Chief, let me ask you, what would be a, a compromise there in terms of, of the, the fencing? If you just went to the back of the building, the back parking lot would be at the corner of Church and Webb, where I think most of the officers comes out of the back of the building and, and fenced, potentially fenced that area and left the other parking areas as they are because frankly, they're used not only by police staff, but also by the public, especially in your special events and so forth. But I understand in terms of if someone is really a new, or know what's going on there, the officers coming out of the back of the building to those vehicles that are parked directly behind it, to me seems to be a, an area that maybe creates more concern. That, right there, yep, right there.
Yeah, that's a, that's certainly a possibility. We really only have sufficient space like under the canopy in the back area there for the sworn on-duty staff. That doesn't allow us any safe parking for the telecommunications, the dispatchers, the crime scene specialists, the evidence handlers, the records personnel that, that work as late as seven o'clock, nine o'clock. We have telecommunications that get off shift at midnight. And, and we want to provide that same level of protection for that professional staff. That's, that's the concern on, on how to manage that with the right number of people. With respect to the parking for events, more than half of that lot to the right outside of the blue area is already configured only for police department parking. There's a big yellow line that runs across there. We're only enlarging that by a, a small amount to ensure adequate coverage. And really, the driving force behind that additional space is that gate access there off of Worf. In order to allow access in for the police staff, that was the best place to do that. We can collapse that in some way and we can, we can rethink that if that's certainly the direction of council.
That's just a, just a thought. I mean.
Right, yep. Yeah, we, we've tried to be as forward-thinking as we can, understanding all the dynamics. It's a it's a, you know, it's a it's a distinct change, and there's just no right answer. We're trying to to find the best solution that that meets everybody's overlapping needs.
Understand. Thank you.
You bet. And then just briefly, so first, let me say that we don't expect any decisions tonight, right? We're just throwing this out for some consideration, just a one way direction of of presentation at this point. So the phase one costs are there at about eight hundred thousand dollars. And we didn't want to say that and not say the next piece so that in a few months come budget time, when we say we need substantially more money, you know, based on the logic that we're perhaps not moving forward with a new building for the police department in the near future, the need to invest more heavily into this building. So we've put off many major repairs over the last three to five years, expecting that we would see some movement and that we, you know, weren't going to invest money in a roof and a generator in a building that we were going to abandon. But if that's not the case, then we're going to undertake these additional steps. The first piece is the lobby rebuild driven by the car crash into that space, but leveraging that need to change to to reengineer some of the rooms. You know, we no longer have a magistrate in our building. All of the magistrates are a hundred percent located in Graham these days. So to reconfigure that space, recapture that for police use, the lobby rebuild comes in at about two hundred thousand. I'll show you the prices here in a minute. The roof is leaking and needs substantial repairs or replacement. The generator was end of life a few years ago. The windows have leaked since they were installed and and need to be replaced. There's significant issues with water intrusion into the building. The H V A C system and boiler system combined are antiquated. They're the most expensive system, the least green system that the city operates, and so we would propose replacing that. And then some continued extensive list of modifications, refits and repairs to the building. So all of that will be included in in budget discussions in the capital improvement plan that that you'll be exposed to over the next month or so. Do we have one more or two more slides, Nolan? This is a quick overview of the lobby restoration. I propose that we kind of table that. We'll come back to it and and kind of go through it line by line when it's when it's easier to look at. And then I think the attached materials show the cost breakdown for the things that we're discussing. The the phase one comes in at eight hundred and thirty four thousand, as you saw. Phase two comes in at one point eight for a grand total building modification cost of just about two point seven million dollars.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from council on this?
Mayor, I'll just add to that. I think where, you know, we wisely, as Chief and I were talking about our reaction to the the two very worst events that we had happen in the last six or eight months. We were wisely advised by our capital projects team and Mr. Kirkman, our assistant city manager, that we probably need to look beyond just the critical safety modifications, but begin to look at all the systems. And so that's what you see here with the phase one and phase two. And as Chief said, no action tonight. We think our next step is obviously take some feedback and continue to work on this. And we'll be back in front of you at the April work session, but we'd appreciate the appreciate the comments and feedback we've received so far and look forward to getting more of that, both this evening and over the next couple of weeks. As I said, this will perhaps even morph into a discussion with F Y twenty one twenty two budget. I think we all understand the realities of what we've seen in the last twelve months to 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 try to pull off a thirty five million dollar construction project for a police station. It'd be difficult to manage the note on that right now at this moment, and then recognize that we want to try to get a little more life out of this building. Like I said, our capital projects team put together this list for us, and we're happy to have that. So everyone has the same information to look at.
Questions from council?
Just Harden, when you're talking about, I totally understand and agree wholeheartedly with where we were a year ago. I could not have even mentally got my brain around trying to consider a building project, the size and scope of this. But knowing where we're at today and knowing that we had very little financial impact, knowing that we've got some pretty significant expenses looming before us here that at best is only going to be a pretty big Band-Aid on a on a still a gaping wound because the core of the building is still what it is. And we're leasing facilities off site. I mean, are we not? And if you look at economic predictions from all indications that I'm seeing, building and both residential and multifamily are going to continue at a pretty rapid pace. We can only assume those things, but it looks like our tax base is going to continue to grow. Should we not be resurrecting the discussion about how to move forward with a comprehensive plan to get this thing right from the beginning?
We are certainly hoping that, Mr. Butler, now I appreciate you bringing that up. We're certainly open to that. I think where Chief and I have been over the last twelve months, we just realized there was just no way to do that. I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think we would enjoy that conversation, welcome that conversation, and would be happy to help facilitate that. We do, as you alluded to, we have a plan in hand from an architect, right, that identifies our needs. And we do continue to pay a lease to North County Railroad Company for a facility. So we would love to continue that conversation if council's interested.
I'll echo support for council member Butler's statements of, I I think what the chief's proposed is is a good solution existing within kind of that current structure of the building and the lot there. But I I don't think it hits kind of a really, really great solution there. And so to kind of re widen the conversation and talk about where where does the future of our police department really need to be? And what's the best long term decision that delivers value and safety to our community in the long term?
Yeah, I mean, I really applaud the efforts to try to come up with a secondary plan, given where we're at. I have a lot of respect for you two and the fact that you haven't been clamoring, saying, hey, what are we going to do about this building? I mean, the obvious, you accept it and you tried to move forward. But I also think we have a responsibility to think bigger picture, and I would like to see us at least have that discussion.
Other council?
Practically speaking, how many years would be looking at if, even if we started tomorrow? Just seems to me that this is a practical way to extend the life of that building at really not very much money out. I was just comparing it to the carousel and what we've spent on that. Certainly seems to me that this is a pretty much a bargain to buy us some years until we can get that police building in in process and built.
I can try to speak to that a little bit. I think, you know, once the defense, the decision on funding is made, you still got, you know, you got to identify a site that could involve purchasing property, due diligence with all that. And then you've got design, build, selecting contractor construction. I mean, that could take two to three years.
Not to be a traditionalist here, but the one thing that our forefathers had the vision that's, if you go back in past public administration processes, having a central fire station and the police station basically adjacent to each other was was sort of the the thing to do. I think that's a, I personally think that's a great site. I mean, I know it's it's got some some limitations, but I do believe that it's it's in the middle of our community. It's 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 accessible. And if you think about it, if anything, maybe a little bit to the east now from what it once was comparable as our city has grown to the west. But it's a it's a it's a pretty great site. I I I think it'd be interesting to see what what the trends are going forward. But I I was involved recently with a town that's looking at a a similar type structure. And the thirty five million dollar number is maybe on the low end right now.
Well, it would be, it would be significantly more than what we looked at in that proposal. I agree with you here.
Yeah, it's it's it's, you know, and and part of it is because of what's happened in our society in terms of what now is being proposed, and Chief can speak to this better than I can, in terms of construction of a police headquarters. I mean, it's 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 a it's a little different situation now. But but also with technology that's needed, you know, we got to remember that building houses our communication aspects of of, you know, how important that is to us. So it's a it's an important facility, and it's one that I think we just need to consider the best route as we go forward.
Member Ward, any feedback to the chief?
No, I'm just looking forward to some additional, you know, conversation. I'd like to look at it, you know, just look at it across the board, you know, not limit ourselves to one or the other. But, you know, I think it'd be good. And I have some, I have some questions about it. We went through this many years ago, but prior to the current building being built, we just, we went through the process of patching up a couple of places, and we, you know, we spent a lot of money doing that. And, you know, my preference would be, you know, to think, you know, certainly think long term. Either, you know, I don't know that we can use a current site or we have to look somewhere else. But in any event, I'm I'm certainly open for some more conversation at this point.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments for staff and the chief?
Mr. Mayor, I may ask if if you all think it's too soon to bring it back at the April work session, would you like us to dig in a little further with some outside assistance and come back? Maybe pre-budget or part of budget, or do you think it's something that's further out than that?
I don't think you need to rush it. What I would think that if if we make a decision to go short term or whatever, that you can always allocate money out of reserves if you need to in in the new budget year at some point in time. If you, here we are in May, in March. I'm not sure exactly Nolan might could get us numbers on on a lot of these items that's been listed here. Maybe they are actual numbers. But then also trying to determine what the lifespan of that building could be if you did make those improvements. So I, you know, it it I think it needs to be a lot of lot of time and effort put into this and thought. And then consider the various options that we have.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I might just make two remarks in closing. The the first is that the some of the original compelling reasons for the new building is to integrate our, you know, staff and resources from these remote sites, right? It's inefficient and we're not as effective a police department in the given structure. So just keep that in mind, right, that the goal really needs to be to bring C I D and those community resources that are at the train station back under the roof so the detectives are, you know, organically interacting with police officers, solving true crime. That's the goal that we want to accomplish. And then when we look at the the building project, we're throwing a number of thirty five million out. We know that's low based on construction costs. But I'll also share with you that over the last year, we've learned that we don't have to have every employee in the building in a way that we originally believed we did. So it would be completely appropriate to rework a space needs assessment and say, how can we stagger employees? How can we better use space? How can we use, you know, telework processes that we've now engineered through the pandemic and carry those forward that would result in a smaller building footprint that would sustain us for many years at a lower cost potentially? So those competing interests should really be, you know, run to ground and thrown up against each other, then come out with what's the next best idea?
Yeah, that's a great point. It is a good point.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, we'll keep working. Maybe we'll be back in April. If not, we'll certainly update council. And we can certainly have some discussion as part of budget, just if we haven't updated you already.
Yeah, I was gonna say, recognizing as the chief brought up that the the lobby still has some kind of Band-Aids on it from the vehicle collision. Chief, if there are items that really impact the day to day, and you talked about that that entryway being welcoming to the public, if there's something that's critical there time wise to help improve safety and operations, I think I'd like to see that sooner rather than later, as long as it's not a kind of a huge chunk of the cost. I know you've got lobby is two hundred thousand on here, but I don't think that that front entryway is is that big of a number. So.
I agree with the mayor on that. I think, you know, I think we do need to do something from the accident that occurred there to that that we need to, we needed to look at that and make some make some corrections there.
Well, perhaps then at the work session, we'll show you what those plans look like, how they they kind of domino, right? So the first necessity is to move that person out from right in front of the door. And that has to put them behind a wall, and then you have to move a wall, and then you have to install a hallway, right? And that's how we ended up with the literally the creep that got us to the two hundred thousand number was the competing interest of how do you protect first the entry and then how do you get the other stuff to align with that? Because you you move the person behind a wall, it displaces some other function. It was just a domino, but we'll go over all that for you. You can take a peek at it.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the police headquarters report? All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you all very much.
To staff report number two, our architectural survey grant. At this time, we'll recognize our manager, Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mayor. And this is a really brief update. Just wanted to let council know where we stand on our historic property survey effort that was recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission and approved by city council back in March of last year. In late August, the city received approval for a state grant to update the historical property data for parcels in the area between South Church, Charlton and Webb. So it's a data collection exercise. In coordination with the State Historic Preservation Office, the city's contracted with a consultant. We entered into agreement with them today. H M W Preservation out of Durham, they'll begin their work right away if if April or maybe actually a little sooner. Staff is working with a consultant on some kickoff communications for the public that'll go to all the affected properties, including direct mail, a digital meeting to get more information. They'll have a little project website and and things like that. And just as a reminder, this is a data collecting exercise for us to update the survey of historic properties in the area that'll serve as a tool for future historic planning processes. So we'd just say during the spring and summer, folks in that area may see some consultant staff out collecting field data. They're they've been advised to stay on the right of ways in those areas, and we think everything will be wrapped up in August this year.
Very good. Any questions from council regarding that architecture survey grant? All right. Thank you, manager. All right, that concludes our regular agenda items. And now we move from all of our public comments to the general public comment period. So for those of you who have stuck with us for these three hours, if you now wish to issue a general public comment on anything not on our agenda this evening, this is your opportunity. Public comments were also accepted in writing until five P M. this evening at publiccomments@birlingtonnc.gov. So anyone wishing to speak at our general public comment period right now, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. If you are having any technical or connection difficulties, we ask that you contact John Vernon at three three six five one three five four four zero. Take just a moment. Does anyone wishes to comment right now? Clerk, did we have any written public comments submitted?
We did not have any written public comments submitted for tonight.
Very good. Thank you. I do not see any requests for public comments. So with that, we will move on to city council comments. So council members, anything you'd like to add tonight?
I just want to say one thing about, you know, we we staff specifically did a lot of work on this U D O. And and we've seen it devolve, and we've had to do a lot of text amendments and small things to it. But it is really pretty fascinating to see how the P D portion of it has worked as we went through a work session and got up to speak and saw the presentation tonight. And I think that's the one piece that probably achieved my expectations and probably even exceeded it. So I I do want to just let everybody know how how important I think that piece was.
Really have having to add all those conditions on to just kind of having them all in the initial proposal.
Yeah.
I think it's exciting to see the 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 interest in development in our community, both from housing and also office and institutional. It's it's always good to see construction starting. It's good to see cranes on site because that means that people want to do business and live in our community. And what's a better compliment than that?
I'm going to share some thanks to all the folks who have been helping out with our COVID vaccine efforts around the community. I know we've got our new testing and vaccination center open. And a lot of folks have been able to get their vaccines. A lot of folks have run into, have gotten their second dose already. So we appreciate everyone stepping up to get their vaccines, and we appreciate everybody behind the scenes helping to administer those. I think our community is better positioned than a lot for efficient vaccine administration, and that helps. But we can show that as soon as we get vaccines in our community, we get them in arms, which is absolutely critical. So thank you to everyone who's put in their time and effort. We've got a lot of city staff who've gone above and beyond their normal job requirements to to help out and keep our community safe moving forward. I do want to recognize CDC recently issued new guidelines for anyone who has gotten their second dose of the vaccine, indicating some of the activities, some of the normal activities that you can start to resume with other individuals in your family or small group and those who have also received their second dose of the vaccine. I know that's reassuring to a lot of folks who are starting to see the return of normalcy on the horizon. So you can check out those latest guidelines on the CDC's website. And also, the, as you've probably seen from the news, the American Rescue Plan Act recently passed and was signed by the president. There's a lot of pieces in that. We heard a lot about them at National League of Cities last week. And North Carolina League of Municipalities and other agencies will be continuing to update municipal leaders around the state on what that means for our community. And so we'll, I'm sure, be talking more and more about that going forward. But just something to keep on the horizon. So.
There's actually a webinar that's been scheduled now for next Tuesday through the leg that council members can can sign up for and providing some of the base information going forward that on the on the stimulus package and and what to expect.
Very good. I'm looking forward to attending that as well. All right. Any other council comments? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much, everyone. We will see you on Thursday morning at 9:15.
Night.